August 26th, regular meeting of Detroit Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. Meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and conferred by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your names for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, and any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or returned on. Ms. Sarnikin, the roll call, please.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krenn?
Here.
Mr. Zanzika?
Mr. Shepke?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Or present. Next item is the approval of the agenda, and the chair will recognize Mr. Hudson.
Mr. Edmonds, I would like to move the addition of the item fracking to our agenda tonight for consideration.
I would support that recommendation. Shall we make an item?
Seven and a half?
Seven and eight? Okay. Very good. Any discussion? The roll call, please.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
The next item is the minutes of the August 12th, 2014 regular meeting. Do I have a motion, please? Mr. Gottlieb?
Motion to accept.
And a second?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes. Agenda item four is public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to an item not on the agenda? Mr. Kuzlin?
Yes, actually, reversed to a master plan, but not Maple Road specifically, so I'd like the comment. Also, if it's-
Larry, could you just speak into the microphone for the-
Microphone.
For the tape, yeah, all right. Otherwise, it won't get re-
It doesn't amplify, but it records.
It's recording, yeah, all right. Thank you, Larry.
Okay. Since I can say, I'm Larry Kuzlin, and I've lived since 1969 at 63.1 San George Drive in Troy. Since probably would be your benefit if I cut off a thousand words or so, I'll put a little, like, a little colored map on the wall. Because my bottom-line concern, and really the only significant concern about the current form, I was the planning director from 1968 until 2001, and through that time, went through modifications of plans, adoption of plans, none as thorough as happened after I retired in 2001. But the one concern that I have is really something which I had through many years of my time here, and that is the concern about the potential, existing and potential proliferation of small retail, strip retail, and things like that. It seems like the proliferation of strip retail, small retail, has been a problem in the Detroit region probably for 50 or 60 years. When mistakes were made in Detroit of having way too much, not, nothing was done. The same mistakes have been done on out into the region. In the, the colored map here is one of the generations of master plans that represents that, and I'm brochure. This is from 1971, a plan adopted in 1971, done by consultants, other, other planning consultants at the time, Villicent. One of the elements of that plan is a whole series of areas called neighborhood service areas or community service areas, generally at major intersections intended to serve adjacent residences. And that was very standard, sort of, and it was sort of a neighborhood plan approach, and that was the, these numerous circles, two different sizes, being neighborhood or community in scale, occurred through most of the residential area, probably with noticeable lack of them in the northwest quadrant of the city. A few years, a couple of years after the adoption by the Planning Commission of this particular addition of the, of the city's plan, we looked at, we tried to determine, there was a lot of concerns expressed about the commercial, actually, one, or the extent of commercial development and zoning. Actually, what got things started was the denial of a rezoning request at the northwest quadrant of Long Lake and Coolidge, where Tom Stratt has lived for a while. There was a commercial center proposed there, which the planning, in an area that was shown for commercial use on the plan, which the Planning Commission recommended against, and the council turned down, and we decided that if there was this concern, it was turned down in part because of a great outpouring of opposition from the area. It was thought that if there was that concern about something which even was shown on our plan, that perhaps we had to look at the retail or the commercial need, and staff-wise, we went through an analysis of using census data and everything else about how much supportable commercial land we could handle in the city on to its completion, the completion of its development. The result of that plan, the city on its own initiative took action to rezone a series of parcels totaling about 180 acres out away from commercial zoning. Now, it would be unfair, actually, half of that commercial re, elimination of zoning was in the North Hill, what was then called North Hill Hills area, you call it North Troy, where there was a regional shopping center proposed by this plan, a part of the North Hill Hills development. But the other 90 acres were from somewhere in the teens, parcels which we, which were zone commercial, which we eliminated, and actually, surprisingly enough, we had only maybe four or five lawsuits as a result of that. Ended up with some good consent judgments, which we used a great deal through those years, to the benefit of both the community and the, and the landowner. And it was that action, it was, was, action to eliminate commercial zoning was a great pain to some folks. In our, in the course of our trials on the lawsuits, which we had, we had some expert witnesses, particularly Bob Swartz, if anybody knows Bob Swartz, professor from Wayne that lives mile and a half west from here, who was a geography professor, and his testimony was typically that an excess of, of commercial land or retail land, particularly small, was potentially a blighting influence on the, on the community and other communities, and he had a lot of, a lot of facts to, and history to back, back that up. So we spent a long time trying to scale down commercial zoning. My concern with the, the current plan, and I think there was a lot of, a lot of needs that were met with the adoption of that plan, actually, the Maple Road area, the, the light industrial area that was our sacred cow years ago, and then became probably our sacred major problem, not so sacred. That's great, there's a lot of, a lot of positive things. The concern I have is, is the, the freedom in which, with which small retail zoning is considered or applied, and two things. One, in, in, as a part of planning unit developments, but more specifically, the, the proposals for so-called neighborhood nodes and such, which are, as I understand, to, to serve adjacent residential areas, to make them more accessible slash walkable, and really, though, that they're not a lot different than the circles that were shown on this, this plan, so I, I still think the problems of, of an excess of, of commercial zoning and development are with us, and they're, they're apparent out on the street. I know sometimes there are no alternatives proposed for non-residential development, but that doesn't mean that you have to accept all of the alternatives, and I would just urge you to be very careful in the application of additional small-scale commercial zoning or, and, and, and development, whether it's along a frontage, or as a part of a so-called neighborhood node, or local service area like that, so that's the concern. Please look at that, look at that more closely, and realize that even though the caught, the design concept of having a retail area that's accessible to neighbors is fine, the overall impact, if you've got way too much commercial land and a lot of vacant buildings and land, is, is a negative one on the overall community, even though you may pass up an opportunity to have some neighbors' convenience, I think it's more important to have the, the community solvent and more stable in its, in its base. That's it. Be glad to answer any questions, and probably can talk a lot more history than you want to hear about, but that's, that's the concern. As you, as you proceed, whether, whether it's a major road frontage, or whether it's a, an intersection area, or whether it's a part of a PUD, please consider whether it really is a need for scattered small-scale retail.
Any comments from Mr. Kuzlin? Mr. Shepke?
What do you see the, the big negative impact of bringing in small sta, small-scale commercial development such as stores and, and that into, into the neighborhoods? I know our job is to protect the neighborhoods, and that's, that's very important to us. The walkability and kind of keeping up with the demands of the, the younger professionals and the millennials out there, that's, that's a concern, too, because we want to create a desirable, a desirable community, so what we're trying to do is balance this very carefully, but things have changed a lot since those maps were drawn up, and I know there's a big, there's a big overdevelopment over the years for commercial property, but by the, by the proper mix of small, commercial in with residential, I think a lot can be, a lot can be gained for desirability for the new millennial generation.
You're saying what? You're saying it's been overdone, you mean regionally, or?
Well, commercial property right now, they're, like offices, in, in small businesses, there's a lot of vacancies, there's a lot of buildings sitting out there empty, and because business cycles change, the economy has, has experienced some tremendous losses, tremendous downside, and, and we understand that, and we don't want to overbuild on something. We're just trying to create a desirable atmosphere for people, the younger generation to raise families. My generation wanted big lots and, and a lot of space around them and stuff like that, but the, the newer generation, I've got a grandson that falls in that, he says, "I like everything nice and close, and I like to be able to walk or bike or do this," and so what we're trying to do is, as a planning commission, is, is trying to incorporate new ideas very cautiously into our master plan, so I don't quite, I can't quite grasp your major concerns.
I guess the major concern is vacant space elsewhere, nearby, blading elsewhere. Now, I know there's only so much you or even the city council can do to affect the market, but there's still, you know, there's, there's, you still have to, to give it a shot, but I found, in my early, my beginning in the planning business was the era of the gas stations. Some may remember that, only a few of us are old enough to remember when there were four on every intersection. The reason there were four on every intersection was not because there was a demand for four in every intersection. The reason was because each of those guys thought they could do, you know, knock the other guy out of business. So if they're successful, that's fine, what happens to the other guys? So I, I think that's, I think that's, that's the problem, and it's, you know, it's not Troy, it's not only Troy, but it's everywhere, everywhere in this region and probably many others. So the problem is negatively impacting, you know, other, other retail properties. Now, some of them you say, "Well, this has been sitting here for 20 years vacant," and I say, "We're not going to wait for that to occupy before we do any more retail." Well, since, you know, again, you can only affect the owners so much, but I think in, in the big picture, I think it's important to recognize that there may be better uses than additional small retail. Say, even though you may inconvenience some of the immediate neighbors, or they don't realize it yet, but that may, that may be the effect, it's still better than having more vacant space, retail space somewhere else.
Well, I understand that, sir, but I think that as a planning commission and as a city, we have to learn from the mistakes of the past, like you say, the overbuilding of commercial gas stations and areas like that, but that's not what we're all about. We're all about protecting the neighborhoods and adding nice things around Troy that are going to want people to create a, enjoy a nice green space with a commercial, with commercial endeavors, and to be accessible to everybody, and so we understand your concerns about that, it's just that change is hard sometimes, and we're trying to do it slowly so that we're not going to impede on, on residents, but I, I think that there are one thing in life that's going to happen, and that's change, and we either change with it, or, or we're, we're not going to be a viable housing market, so we're trying to create the market and also to protect our residents and, and work for the good of the city. If, if they get a few more tax dollars off a commercial business, that's, that's not what we're all about. We're all about the long-term effects of whatever we, whatever we propose to do, so that's my two cents, and I understand your concerns, because in the past, I've had some along, along those lines, too, but the more I've gotten involved in going on, and learning about, and seeing what other communities have done, they've done some beautiful, beautiful things. So anyway, that's, thank you very much for your, your coming down and-
I encourage you to try, try some-
Yes.
Mr. Kuzlin, thank you very much for your comments.
I'm not sure how many people would move your focus on retail.
Anyone else who wants to speak to an item that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll go to the zoning board of appeals report, Mr. Krenn.
Yes, we had one item come before our board. It was a lot split, and the, we approved it. The, let me give you some of the particulars, I think there's two issues in this particular ident, item that we had, I think are applicable to this commission. One is, well, let me, let me give you a brief overview, then I'll get into the two points. The lot, what, the, first, I'll start with the district. It's R1B, the minimum lot width is 100 feet. The lot originally plotted, plotted, whatever, I don't know what the right term is, but when it was originally surveyed, it showed on the original paperwork that the lot was 200, this is one lot, 201 foot wide, and the owner wanted to split it into 100 and then maybe 101. It was resurveyed and came up slightly short with new, I guess, technology, or maybe the placement of the old irons, I don't know, and it was, it is 199.95 feet wide. So the split, they've required a variance of basically point 01, 05 feet, or roughly .6 inches, and we looked at it, we couldn't, it had to come before us, because even .6 inches by law, it has to come before us. What I thought was interesting is that, well, first of all, it was approved because the origin, there was nothing that the owner or the previous owner did to the property to cause this situation, so we approved it. But it brought up a couple of issues. One is, the guy spent 150 bucks to come up before us for a .6 inch. I think we can improve our ordinance, and one of the members of our board, Dave Eisenbacher, made a suggestion that we, he's an engineer, we do what engineers do, is give tolerances to things, and it just so happened that the tolerance on this, that .6 inch, would have been five, ten thousandths times whatever the property width is, so if the property was, like this case, 100 foot, we allowed a, a variance of five, ten thousandths of that width, which came out to .6 inches, but we could discuss the, whatever tolerance we can allow, but I'm saying, we, we really need to, as a board, after we finish our planning, master plan work, get into the ordinance and look at, that is another issue to bring up, as I've brought up previous issues. The other point was the "not in my backyard" situation, and the two people in opposition for this, one was not even on the street, was in the subdivision, but removed by the street. They live on a lot that's 62 feet wide, and the reason that some of these lots are smaller than 100 is because there was some kind of, I can't remember the term again.
Lot size averaging?
Yeah. Well, they had public space, a public space utilization, so they could shrink the, the width of their lot slightly. Her complaint was basically that it would cause property values, that .6 inches would cause property values and subdivision to drop, and it would be a detriment to that whole area. The other person, whose backyard butted to the side yard of this proposed split yard, she said, "I would be willing to have it approved if the board would put up some kind of screening, maybe greenery or something else." So my thought was, maybe we should, instead of just having, this was brought up by one of the conferences I attended, by the way, how to, how to kind of mitigate this "not in my backyard" situation. We presently sent out notice to people 300 feet away, and that's been adopted because it's been across the country, I guess, maybe it's been-
It's actually the state enabling legislation.
It's in that legislation. Point is, what they were saying at this, I believe it was a state convention, by the way, that what you really, if you do it just at 300 feet, what happens is all the people that have, you know, critical of budding properties, they're, "Oh, I don't want any change. I don't want any change, no matter if it's good or bad or indifferent, I don't want it." So it's no, automatic. If, what they, there was a study showing that if you encompass a large area, maybe a mile, square a mile of notification, you'll get people coming out saying, "Oh, of course that's sensible," but usually only the negative people come out, but there would be probably more, more positive responses, either by mail or email, to that situation. So I'm saying, we maybe should address, and I realize that's the state enabling act thing, I don't know if we can expand that area, but it might be something that we should, because, I mean, to me, these were frivolous comments from these people, but it was, it just showed the tone of anybody within 300 feet, it's like, no, no matter what, it's no, even a half an inch. So I think that might be something we could look at, maybe propose to the state, I don't know, just, just a thought. That's my report.
Mr. Sevins?
It was an interesting variance application. The Land Division Act basically gives, in our case, in Detroit's case, the assessor has the ability to approve lot splits under the Land Division Act. There's a couple of requirements, you've got to make sure that, that the number of lots figures into the formula, the maximum formula, how many you can do before you have to plan or do, do so. The lots that are created have to be acceptable up in frontage and roads, and the other standard is, it's got to comply with the city Troy zoning ordinance. The one lot did not comply with the city Troy zoning ordinance, so as per the land, as per state law, our assessing department cannot approve a lot split that does not comply with our zoning ordinance, so we said to the surveyor, "Can you try it from a different section corner? Can you, can you work it from, go the other direction? Can you hold the, hold your survey stayed on the other side of it?" I mean, we're talking about base, almost the width of a piece of paper, almost, I mean, I'm exaggerating a little bit, but not much. As per the, the act, P132 survey, the, you know, the, the surveyor seals, steals it, signs it, so, I mean, he put his reputation on the line when he prepared the document, and I respect that. I mean, he, it was an accurate survey, he stood by it, and, and that's what it is. The point I'm getting to is the issue of tolerance. I think that the zoning board of appeals is there for tolerance, that's their role. They, they look at the application, and look at each application on a case-by-case basis. They, the application meets the standards of the, of the variance application, and in this case, ZBA found that it did, and unfortunately, it cost the applicant 150 bucks and probably a month. But when you start, start looking at tolerance, I mean, the standard's 100 feet, it's not 99 feet, 11 and nine tenths of an inch, that's not, that, the requirement's 100 feet, so tolerance, when, when you're talking about 100 feet, I, I get the concept of considering tolerance, but what about a decedition, that the setback requirement's 10 feet? Do we allow for tolerance to go down to nine? Well, if we're going to go down to nine, let's change the step, setback to nine. You know, and so it's, it, it, it opens up a whole philosophical can of worms, but I think that that's the zoning board of appeals role. I, I respect the concept, I think it's, it's an interesting concept, but I think that's what the ZBA is there for. My, that's my two cents.
Sure.
Yeah.
I would agree, because you don't get that many different cases like that. I mean, this is probably the first one you've had like that, that, since you've been on the ZBA, so I agree, I think that the ZBA is, is doing its job as, as, as designed and specified.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Stratt.
Just a comment, piggyback on Tom's comment, actually, Auburn Hills is 1,000 feet, and the plaintiff has to send the announcements to 1,000 square foot people. Oh, really? 1,000 feet away? Yeah, not the city's cost, but 1,000 square feet.
So the applicant bears the cost?
Yes.
Interesting.
They give them their names, or the numbers, and their any addresses.
With our, with our fees, with our fee structure, the applicant bears the cost of us preparing it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've, I've got a, a question for-
Mr. Gottlieb, first, please.
Just a clarification point. Had it been 101 as it was originally specified, the assessor could have simply rewritten the description, and it would have been administratively approved.
Yeah, what triggered it was, we go from one lot to two, we require the applicant to provide two legal descriptions of the two new lots. Well, the, the one lot meant 100 feet, the other lot did not, so the assessor could not approve a lot that did not meet the zoning ordinance by-
Oh, I understand. But had it meant the-
Had it meant, would it have been approved?
Non-issue.
Non-issue.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And, and it goes back to older survey techniques. I mean, I've seen surveys, back when I was a consultant, you know, continue about 400 feet to the old oak tree, and then north, 600 feet to the old-
To the rock.
The old rock fence and stone fence. I think, so it, I mean, some, technology has drastically improved, and accuracy has drastically improved, drastically improved.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the-
I had a follow-up, if you don't mind. That 1,000 feet notification, you're talking about the notification, is that what the 1,000 feet you're talking about? Is that fly, fly in the face of the state?
No, it's the 300 is the minimum.
Oh, okay.
We can go as large as citywide.
That's, that's what I needed here. Thank you.
Yeah, as long as it's 300 feet minimum.
Thank you.
It used to be 500 feet, I think, I changed it to 300 feet.
Okay, let's move on to the item number six, planning and zoning report.
The most significant item reported is, last month, we discussed the P, Plan Unit Development application for the property on the north side of Big Beaver, just East of Janar, where they had the retail component in the front and the residential component in the back, and the planning commission had a lot of comments regarding the quality of the residential, and the applicant submitted a revised concept drawing, just for kind of feedback. He wasn't able to meet the, to, what happened was that the applicant was a, was a realtor, the owner removed the applicant from, from the application- owner removing the applicant from, from the application, didn't tell us, so we gave the correspondence to the, the person's name and email on the application. He didn't forward it to the owner without the engineer, no one attended the meeting, but he did watch the video, he said it was very helpful, he apologized for not attending the meeting, he, he wasn't, we communicated to, inadvertently with the wrong person. But nonetheless, the design of the, of the residential component is dramatically improved, and we indicated to the applicant to give us a complete set of drawings, and we'll forward it to the planning commission for further discussion.
Great. Anything else?
That's it.
Next item is the master plan update, Maple Road and special area plan.
This, we're kind of, we'll kind of tag team it, Ben will lead and I'll chime in, I'm very good at chiming in, as you all know. So, you'll remember, June twenty-fourth, we presented the North Troy Study Area, we took some comments, and the draft document has been revised, and it's coming out this evening. July twenty-second, we reviewed the Rochester Road Study Area, that portion of Rochester Road between Big Beaver and Waddles, that's, that, that's being revised based on comments by the planning commission. There wasn't a lot, it was pretty well received. Tonight, we will be talking about the Maple Road Study Area, that's the third of four subarea plans. The fourth and final subarea plan to be presented is the Big Beaver Study Area. We're gonna hold off on that because there's a, there's gonna be a Big Beaver Symposium as part of the initiative called Move Across Troy, where we're looking at ways to improve mobility in areas of the city. The Big Beaver Symposium will obviously focus on Big Beaver, and looking at ways to improve mobility along Big Beaver for pedestrians, but more importantly, across Big Beaver, especially mid-block. It's the one hundred yard dash for your life, some, in some areas, when you're trying to get across Big Beaver for lunch. So, we're gonna, we've, we've got an expert coming in from, from Illinois, and he's gonna lead, lead some, with the help, assistance of the city manager, is gonna lead some dialogue. We're gonna invite, it's gonna be open to residents, engineers, design professionals, realtors, anyone interested to, to attend and contribute.
Great.
October first, and we'll provide more information as it becomes available.
It's September.
There's a, there's a, there's a targeted, there's a targeted meetings for specific people on the thirtieth, thirtieth of September.
Yeah.
For example, the chairman's one of the targeted people, and we'll be invited. And then, on, on October first, we'll be open in, for, to the public.
Very good.
That's it.
Yep. Okay.
So, I have a very long presentation, a lot to say, so. No, I, it's, it's, it's a short presentation, and really looking for more feedback for the planning. Just so, as Brent kind of went over, where we are on the timeline, we're, we're working in this summer period here, we're gonna go through the four plans. Obviously, Big Beaver's been shifted based on what Brent said. We are on schedule with a target date, hopefully to be adopted sometime in early next year. Before I start, Maple Road was the most, is, I think, the most difficult plan to write. It will be the most difficult plan to write. We're looking at an area of six miles in length with an eclectic mix of uses, it's got nine different zoning districts adjacent to it. It's got a lot going on. I think you'll find our plan is somewhat reflective of the eclectic nature of, of, of Maple Road. So, so bear with me as we kind of walk through this and kind of what our vision is. All of our plans are based on some of the findings we found in that real estate forum that we discussed earlier, and there are really two groups of recommendations. The first is in regards to land use, providing mix of uses, entrepreneurialism, and creativity, is what these first three recommendations speak to. The second group of recommendations, the three below that, is really to improve transportation, and that's really in two forms. The first is pedestrian transportation along the corridor, as well as getting to the corridor. And the second one is public transportation, specifically linking to the, the new transit center, as well as public transportation just along the corridor. The last one is an impact study for I seventy-five access to Maple Road, that was thrown out, it was not included as part of our plan, because that's really a larger concept that we didn't really flesh out, but that was something that did come up in the, in the forum. With all that being said, our vision for Maple Road is really a less of a focus on land use, and more of a focus on ensuring quality development, business incubation, creation of anchors, and building up the existing anchors, and really reinvestment through entrepreneurship. We want Maple Road to be a place where people choose to be because of these, this entrepreneurial spirit and creative spirit. There were really three priorities that came out, and this graphic is, is, might be a little bit difficult to, to see, but we think of Maple Road, and to, to better organize our thoughts on Maple Road, and better organize the plan, we really thought of Maple Road in three different segments. The first segment we thought of are these kind of core intersections, at the, at the intersection of the major, major mile roads, there's five of them throughout the corridor, spaced along evenly, really throughout the corridor. The second segments that we're thinking of or considering are those areas that are off the corridor, but are mostly primary industrial and kind of reuse, the creative entrepreneurial kind of areas, and these are these areas that are shown in these purple colors. The third segment to think about and divide the corridor is these, these segments along the corridor that are between these major mile intersections, and these are some of the hardest to deal with because they're kind of the lost parcels, or forgotten parcels along the corridor. So, how do we create value in those areas when they're oftentimes the most difficult parcels to develop? So, the three priorities that came out, basically, the organization of, of Maple Road, these three, three areas are, first is to generate investment at the development nodes, the second is to encourage entrepreneurialism and redevelopment of these areas off major mile, off major Maple Road corridor, and the third is to enhance and strengthen these areas, these segments between the major mile intersections. So, the first recommendation was, the first, first recommendation is, is generate investment at development nodes, and we have three strategies. One is to encourage high-quality commercial and mixed-use development at the major mile intersection, and this, and this actually really falls in line, in line to what Mr. Keasling was speaking to earlier, is, let's focus some of the commercial retail developments at the major mile intersections where they are most economically viable for retail uses, and start to really concentrate those in concentrated areas. The second is to engage surrounding residential neighborhoods through linkages, and lastly is to incentivize development through zoning. So, what do we mean by encourage high-quality commercial development? The first is, we really need to think about encouraging lot consolidation. At these major mile intersections, a lot of times they are these smaller parcels, and you can't get consistent quality development unless you have a large parcel. For example, the MJR Theater went there because it was one solid consolidated parcel. It was easy for them to turnkey that into their, into their theater. It would not be achievable if they had to consolidate a bunch of parcels, it would be very, very difficult. So, the idea is to consult, to, to encourage and incentivize consolidation, so you have these turnkey sites that allow for more of these anchors-type developments. Second is to consider both and require internal and external pedestrian connections to some of these major sites. We have a number, I'll talk about this in a second, we have a number of people that, you know, we have thousands of people that live within a half mile of these sites. So, how do we get people to these sites easily? And once they're on the site, how do we allow them to easily travel within the site by walking? The third is to make sure that every corner of every major mile intersection includes a building, every hard corner should be a building. This should not be parking as it is currently, this should be a building, and that really reinforces the viability of that corner, and lends itself to more of a commercial retail development. We should encourage ground-level retail, that really is an active type use, and that wants to encourage, incentivize more activity in the area. And lastly, we should utilize some existing anchors that we have placed, such as the MJR. Let's build off the enthusiasm that we have at the MJR, and similar anchors, the Whole Foods Development on the, on the other end of, of the corridor, to really incentivize initial development in the area. The second one I spoke to really briefly is, let's encourage and engage surrounding residential. Within a half mile, we, we have thousands of people that are in walking distance to these, to these areas. So, we really need to ensure that these development nodes have everyday uses that people can go to. Should have grocery stores, it should have convenience stores, it should have bookstores or coffee shops, places that people can come throughout the day and enjoy at various times of the day. They should be easy to walk to, but they should also be pleasant to walk to. We need to make sure we fill the sidewalk gaps exist on Maple Road, we need to encourage pedestrian orientation to these sites and get people to these sites. We need to ensure that there's appropriate landscape and buffering for these parcels at front on Maple Road, but also back up to the residential properties. A, a significant portion of Maple Road, one parcel off of these, of these parcels, is single-family residential. Same issue we're facing on Rochester Road, is how do we buffer and landscape those appropriately? And the last one is to encourage public transportation along, along the corridor and the linkage to, to the transit center, to encourage alternative transportation. The last recommendation for the development nodes is really to incentivize development through zoning. This is more of the carrot versus the stick approach to zoning. Right now, we have more of a stick. You need to do this, you need to do that, you need to do this. Well, I think we're all starting to think that maybe Maple Road, we need to think more creatively about the zoning for the Maple Road form-based district. One of the things we've done in other communities is done sort of a incentive versus public benefit type zoning. For example, if you wanna do a drive-through, if you wanna have build-to-line flexibility, if you wanna have an increased building height, in exchange for that, you have to give us a recognized benefit. And the benefits, we just listed some of these, could be a lot consolidation, could be a mixed-use development. So, we're giving a trade-off, you know, for, in, in, in order to do a drive-through, carrot, you give us something in exchange as a benefit, and what that exchange can be, it can be a discussion with the planning commission, and, and based on the, the, the amount of relief or the amount of, of flexibility that they're asking for, that should be commensurate with the, with the benefit improved. So, it just kind of gives another approach to incentivize the type of development we're seeing here, because I'm not sure the stick approach right now in this market right down there is really the, the, the most effective approach to utilize moving forward. So, now we're moving off the development nodes at the corners, and we're now talking about these industrial properties, and some of these eclectic kind of uses off of the, off the corridor. I think it's important, and Larry actually raises this too, is this issue of industrial properties. The previous plan really looked at ways to kind of redevelop, re-incentivize some of these areas, but I think it's important to remember, these industrial properties and industrial base is still very, very important to the city of Troy. They provide a significant number of jobs, they have significant tax base, so we need to encourage them and support them and recognize their importance and value. So, these are kind of the three strategies that we talk about doing to, to do that. The first is to preserve and enhance the traditional industrial areas. The second is to promote creation of districts and encourage compatible industries, and lastly, and thirdly, is to evaluate the expansion of the Smart Zone and LDFA boundaries. So, what do we mean by encouraging in, in this? Well, the first two is really preserving and enhancing the areas we have. We have a pretty strong industrial base in these areas, some need improvements, but what public improvements can we make? How can we improve the sidewalks? How can you improve sewer water management? How can we improve parking in this area? How can we really help and then support the industrial base in those, in those particular areas? And the second one is that, let's look at the idea of promotion of districts and encourage compatible industries. We've kind of already had that start a little bit, especially, for example, if you look in this area, it's, I, I would call it the interior designer home furnishing center, it kind of grew organically, so let's not mess with it, let's leave it alone, and if, but if those type of grouping of industries gather in other places along the corridor and other locations, let's encourage that, and let's not, kind of, let's leave well enough alone. If it's going well, don't, don't mess with it. So, that's this kind of other concept. So, this could be anything from the construction trades, we're kind of seeing a lot of construction trades on, is it Birchwood?
Yes.
Birchwood. You know, there might be, you know, engineering or technology clusters developing form, but these are going to be formed organic, it's not necessarily going to be an action of the city, but when they do start to form, let's recognize them and let's kind of support them how we can. And lastly, is to expand the Smart Zone and LDFA boundaries. The Smart Zone, I'm not sure if, if the planning commission is really clear what these two programs are. The Smart Zone is actually a state-run program, and there are a few of them across the state. What it is, it tries to link up universities with private businesses and expand the business opportunities coming out of the university, think tanks essentially. We have one in Troy, it's Automation Alley. The boundaries of the current Smart Zone are, this area's in white, can't really tell here. We also have an LDFA. An LDFA is a tax increment financing district. What it allows you to do is recapture the taxes created in that district and use them for public infrastructure and other public improvements, and specific uses within the LDFA. The LDFA, LDFA border is this checkered border. At a minimum, we think the LDFA border should be expanded to match that of the Smart Zone. It just makes sense, let's support these other areas in the Smart Zone that are outside the LDFA. A step further than that is the consideration of actually expanding the LDFA and the Smart Zone farther south, could be a lot of industries and businesses farther south on Bellingham that could also be supported. The expansion of the LDFA, of the Smart Zone requires state approval through the M D B C. The LDFA is done locally, it'll also need state approval. So, it's nothing that we can tackle now, it's something to consider in the future, and that's something actually we're, we're in discussions right now about doing with the LDFA board for further expansion of, of these two areas. Okay, well, that leaves the last segment, and this is one of the most difficult ones to, to deal with, is what do we do with these interior corridor segments? Oftentimes, they're a varied amount of uses, some are single-family, some are industrial, some are auto-oriented uses. A lot of times, they're smaller parcels, they're more the bowling alley type parcels that we talked about are often difficult to develop, oftentimes are very short and narrow parcels, they're less than a hundred feet in depth, and you really can't do anything other than single-family residential, or maybe multi-family residential, you can't do anything on a hundred-foot depth parcel. So, we need to think about how we can, can enhance these areas. Well, we have four strategies. The first is to identify alternative value, second is implement zoning amendments, and the third is improve pedestrian access, and the last one is improve, improve pedestrian crossing. So, what we mean by alternative value is reinforce and build on the value that's already there. I'll give you an example, around the Auto Mall, there's a lot of auto-oriented type uses, auto suppliers, there's oil change facilities, there's tire shops, there's kind of an auto-oriented auto industry section around that area. Well, it's not, maybe not the best uses, it's not the most aesthetically pleasing uses, but it's a viable area that doesn't have many vacancies, and it's actually a pretty strong area. Let's leave that alone, let the market take care of it as it is, and just leave well enough alone. For those areas that are struggling, we need to look at and encourage alternative land uses. This is kind of a little bit, again, jumping on what Larry said, some of these parcels that are used for commercial really don't fit the model of what a new retail development really needs, so we need to start thinking about some alternative land uses here. This might include residential, this might kind of be the last boundary to kind of provide a nice transition between the residential neighborhoods that are adjacent and, and Maple Road itself. Or we can also start encouraging some usable open space, because there really is not any usable open space on Maple Road itself. We have discussed this at the prior meeting about some zoning amendments for that, to permit some building flexibility. One of the issues to look at is potentially some build-to-line flexibility. We've had some discussions with some of the retail community and other office-type market, and they find that the restrictive on Maple, Maple Road of being, of built the ten-foot property line is, is a hindrance to redevelopment. So, we might think about, in these core segments, about reducing some of that, and being more flexible in where you can actually place the building and place parking. The other big change that we are recommending is actually extending the Maple Road form-based district north to Chopin Road. They don't have a great, doesn't show up very well in this picture, but this is MJR Theater, and right across the street are those strip retail and the smaller type mom-and-pop type shops. Well, tho, that, those parcels in depth are, are less than a hundred feet in depth. Realistically, you really can't do much, and actually, there's, there's an image in the, in the, in the plan that shows that the Maple Road zoning kind of just bifurcates and splits that block in half. So, those properties that front on Chopin Road north are zoned single-family, those to the south are zoned Maple Road. Realistically, unless we include the, the parcels that are north to Chopin Road or Chopin Road, the viability of ever getting anything done in that area pretty much is, is gonna be hard to do. So, what we're recommending or considering is actually extending Maple Road north to, up to Chopin Road to include those parcels at front on it, to allow them some flexibility for reuse, including mostly, we're, we're targeting mostly a multifamily type, type zoning or type use in that particular, particular location.
You don't like palm readers?
I love palm readers. In fact, one of my old, my first job, I was one of those guys that would answer the call and someone would say, you know, "What's the zoning of my property?", and I'd tell them. I got a call from a, a palm reader, and she said, "Can I go to this property?", and I said, "Well, you should know that already, shouldn't you?"
So, anyways, this is my.
Where would the hill lie be? Where, where is Chopin?
Let me find the plan, and it's, it's better, it's easier shown. Let me get on a good picture of it. Brett, will you put a zoning map on?
And what about Studs, the Design Center? See if Mike gets growing.
See if Mike gets growing also his own culture and developing itself.
Right, right. That's another example of the kind of the clusters, just leave it alone, let the market do it.
Yeah, it's starting to. I would like to see more artists move into that area, that's where I really like to.
Yeah.
I think when Lawrence Tech did their study, that was one of the things that they talked about.
Yep.
I think that'd be excellent, as well as some of the light industrial areas that you were talking about.
Yeah, because those areas, the rents are low enough that
Yeah.
artists can afford, or a collection of artists can afford.
Well, there's all kinds of things like the sculpture and the torches and the welding and those kinds of things that lend itself to that type of environment too.
Brian, it's not showing up on the screen too, so. Wow. I think you gotta. Okay, so. So this is the area that we're talking about here. These parcels are basically less than 100 feet depth. What we're discussing, and I think Mr. Kren actually brought something, kind of similar concept up on Rochester, is extending the form-based district up to this line in order to allow for more market flexibility for these parcels, but also for these parcels behind there too. We think that realistically, the fact that we, the other option would be to rezonate these as a single-family. I don't think that's really viable, especially now you're across the street from the movie theater. And we think that rezoning, you know, rezoning these properties also gives an economic boost to these people too because they can stay forever as a single-family home. But it also allows them some increased property value potential by allowing for another mix of different types of uses on the property too.
So the trick is how do you treat the relationship between the backside of the property? So if it is eventually rezoned, you know, this treatment along here is you've got to be sensitive to the existing residential neighborhood. Protecting single-family residential properties, there's got to be sensitivity here. So the assumption is that this is rezoned, or certainly master plan, at least, at the very least, master plan. So you rezonate on a case-by-case basis, it encourages assembly and gets more depth. The treatment here, it's got to be, it's got to be positive. Can't be a throwaway zone where people are looking out the front window at dumpsters and.
Yeah. Page 15 of your report actually shows how we would addition the treatment of these parcels. It, we've got multifamily across the single-family, there's a more relationship, there's kind of the transition involved between Maple Road and the single-family.
And it is, it is a more heavy-handed approach because, I mean, it's, the lack of depth there sticks out like a sore thumb.
Well, it's also important to remember, this Maple Road form-based line is straight across at least this far. And this is the only area along the whole corridor where it dips down. And that's simple because this, these are one, you know, this Maple Road is perched one parcel off Maple Road. This is the only place where it's very, very shallow. And I think that's one of the reasons why we haven't seen anything happen in this particular area.
It does have the effect, as Ben mentioned, of increasing value for those properties.
I think the big concern with it though is, let's say that the first few people on those residential that sell off their property to the commercial on Maple, they're going to get big money for their property. But the other ones, in the meantime, you've created an eyesore and then the other people aren't going to want to live there. But, you know, it might be hard for them to have the value in their property that really, that it should have because you've got, you've got a situation where you've chopped up this residential neighborhood and created an eyesore and the people that are left are going to just want to flee or are going to have to sell for next to nothing. That would be my concern. I don't know a good way to, by extending that zoning to protect the value of those good residents that are on Chopin there. That would be my concern, we have to come up with some kind of formula.
I think it might be just the opposite.
You think so?
Yes, because it's going to encourage assembly of those properties.
Well, it might, it could go either way.
And people who have, you know, lived in a house for 30, 35, 40 years and a developer comes in and starts assembling these properties, then they could end up, you know, yeah, they are going to have to move, there's no question about that. But they might have a lot of, they might have a considerable gain over what they invested, so.
The holdout.
It could be.
They're the holdout.
Mr. Turner.
And they get the biggest bucks.
Didn't this exact scenario happen on Ondale? Do we have any historical perspective?
How did that work on Ondale over there off Rochester Road?
West.
Well, I can't speak to that. I can tell you, in the neighborhood nodes where we rezoned from single-family to mixed use, we've had a number of our property owners that own a single-family come in and say, oh wow, now I can do commercial and my properties were twice what it was before. So I think it's the opposite. I do feel that it would actually increase the economic viability of those properties. But there's the trade-off is that you are permitting a multitude of uses on their properties. Their neighbors, they wouldn't stay single-family, their neighbors could sell out and be whatever, you know.
Crooks in water. And intersection.
Yeah.
Went up immensely since we identified that as a note.
Yep.
That corner, the southwest corner escalated like you can't believe.
Yes, Mr. Turner.
The client trying to lie.
I take advantage of the fact that Mr. Keesling is here this evening, I put him on the spot in a positive way. Institutional memory, this area. Zone IB now was light industrial. That was a single-family residential subdivision at one time, correct?
John R. Gardens.
Yes.
500 sublots, 50 houses in the 60s.
And there are still some homes.
Some very painful assemblies, but a whole series of, and it worked out reasonably well. I don't, probably the remaining residents may not agree, but it worked out quite well. We had a lot of work to vacate alternate streets. There were additions, there were twice as many east-west streets. We vacated alternating streets and assembled parcels, but it took a long time.
My point for bringing this up is, you know, it is, it was a somewhat heavy-handed approach because it did involve drastic change from single-family residential, in most cases, to light industrial.
It was owned line industrial in the 60s.
Yes, and there are still some homes in there.
Yeah, that's right.
And this, we talked about, Ben mentioned earlier, the concept of the district thing. You go to Birchwood, Wesley, Birchwood, these areas, I could see one of these streets or all of these streets over time becoming a district, like a industrial where it's taking on a kind of a character of a designed street. You know, these, this, I see this as kind of the continuation of what was started in the 60s with that rezoning that at the time was probably considered heavy-handed, probably in the best interest of the city. Although residents in there at the time, some of them would probably disagree. But it's evolved, it continues to evolve. And our plan talks about that continuing and maybe taking on a more distinct character. An entertainment district, a entrepreneur district, that type of thing.
Mr. Chris.
The last purchase agreement that I saw for the property that Jerry Amber purchased at the corner of Town Center in Liverny was in the neighborhood of $300,000. So I don't know, that was the last holdout from that area that now holds the medical buildings on it. I don't know what the other medical buildings paid for their parcels when that area was initially rezoned to be commercial development. But the idea that being a holdout lot or that that's advantageous, at least based on what I saw with the purchase agreement from Probate Court, that did not, to me, turn out to be the case. And it seems to me at $300,000, Jerry Amber stole that property.
That was done under a court settlement.
Right, I mean, it was done in court, it was a negotiated agreement. But the point still is, is one would have thought that that parcel being a gateway into the civic center area would have garnered much more value than it actually may have, assuming that that sale has been completed.
Chair. Just wanted to, one firsthand situation that I experienced in my neighborhood. When the monarch came in, the initial people selling, I remember it was around 125,000 per lot, jumped to 250, the last, the two further back, probably like maybe six months later, they were 450. The last, with the last holdout, he was the last holdup, he got 725,000 for his lot. So.
It's part of the process of assembly of properties.
Right, yeah, I think as it assembles, people realize, I can hold out and that's the big bucks. So I've seen that happen firsthand.
I think the fact that the Amber property was a court settlement and very difficult, I understand in terms of.
This goes without saying, I hope, but just a reminder that just because we put it in the plan doesn't automatically mean we're zoning these properties now. I mean, it still has to go through the public process and house public hearing from the planning commission and ultimately the city council makes that decision. But this is, I think, we think this is a really an important component to this plan in this area to really spur some development. Especially, Billy, you have a huge new movie theater that's really starting to gain a lot of traction there, so something to consider.
Mr. Shipp.
Yes, I like, you know, I wasn't aware of it was going to increase the value of the remaining piece of property. But what are we going to do for a buffer for those folks on the other side of Chopin? I mean, I think that's important, that we don't create an eyesore in that area. Are we going to, those pieces of land, are we going to zone them for maybe condos or something in there with under the property, under the housing, parking and stuff like that? So that we have a gradual transition? We don't want to have a shock transition between that residential neighborhood and the commercial. In other words, we want, we want to protect those good residents as much as we possibly can.
Yeah, that's the trick. I was, when Brent and I had talked about this, we were worried about, one, the properties that were rezoned, but we were also just as worried about the properties that are just north of this and what their impact's going to be. There's different ways to address it. I think the most important one is obviously they would have to go, the future development would have to go through a site plan review. And that's something that you can deal with in the site plan review process. There's not too many restrictions you can put on a rezoning about the future use unless it's done as a conditional design. That can happen with this process, so. It would be, it would be a site plan review and that's where the planning commission plays their role, by ensuring that they protect those residents that are across Chopin.
Great, thank you very much, Ben.
I have two quick other stuff. Last one is improve pedestrian access. There are a number of different sidewalk, we call them sidewalk gaps, particularly along the east side of Maple Road. But there's also a few actually that are boundering on the city of Claussen. We can't force them to put sidewalks in, but we can definitely encourage them to kind of help us and fill these gaps. But there's also some that should be filled in along the eastern side. As well as lastly, is develop some sort of streetscape program, similar to what we're recommending on Rochester Road. Again, that can be done comprehensively, or you do it at one time, or it can be done as we adopt a program and a standard. It can be done as development occurs throughout the corridor. Last, I do it one more, last one. This is a similar issue that we're dealing with on Big Beaver, is getting people across Maple Road, especially, you know, in the areas between the major mile intersection. So we think there should be improved pedestrian crossings, definitely at all the major mile road intersections. They should all be strict appropriately, they shall have countdown timers that are now standard if they don't have those. As well as we are proposing improvements to the existing crossing at Edinburgh Road, which is actually named Doyle Road. A crosswalk at the light at Maple Land or does not currently crosswalk there. A mid-block crossing near, I can't pronounce it, Highten Boulevard or Hattie Drive and Bywood, Avenue, Claussen. Improvements to existing crossing at Cumbersen Drive and, I'm sorry, Combermore Drive. And a mid-block crossing near Bellingham Drive and Chicago Road. Last thing is we do an action plan in the back of the, back of the plan. Again, as a guideline for the planning commission and the city as they move through the plan to make sure that we're on track with putting these sort of strategies in place. That's it, I'm done.
Any questions for Mr. Tyrell?
Just a comment I'd like to make because that area that Claussen has, that projection there, I know that the city manager tried to buy that, I think Larry, you were acting on that, worrying about.
Claussen.
Yeah, that part that we're talking about that's directly across the street.
No.
Yeah, okay, well, I know that Sir Ligo was trying to negotiate to buy that or to get that.
Required land.
Our city, they wouldn't go for it. Were you in part of that?
No.
No, Sir Ligo was trying to do that. Yeah, it was. It was pretty bad there. You know, it's hard to control like you were saying.
Well, I also think in terms of the sidewalk gaps, that, you know, once redevelopment begins to occur, those kind of things, I think Claussen would certainly consider that probably. Any other comments?
Well, one other thing that we learned from the Big Beaver quarter where the landscaping, the trees, you know, for all the trees and that sort of thing, that couldn't really make a big impact on that, to me, I think. But of course, that's all money, that city, how do we give any incentives to have that happen on your own?
I did have one thought. I have a copy of the previous study, the Troy Maple Road corridor study back in 2006. And one thing, one of the plans showed, and no one's going to see it from here, but there's evidently an underground waterway that goes between, well, actually extends east of I-75 and goes, looks like pretty much almost to the transit center. And the idea, they wanted to uncover that drainage system that's underground and bring it to the surface again and have it as a water feature to create a parkway and other attractions. I thought that was rather novel and neat idea. I don't know, I didn't see anything to address that. But I would like to see, again, creating that kind of environment where you've got a water feature and retail and parks and maybe some evening activities, it may be a nice draw for that residential community that's so closely near, you know.
Especially the industrial area, which is where it really is a part of.
Dr. Grant is a part of it.
It really made a real significant. We can learn a lot from Texas, huh?
San Antonio.
You were there, weren't you? Yes, we were there together, yeah. That was great.
Good job, Steph, I think.
Thank you.
A lot of good thought here. I think we'll now move on to agenda item 7A, the discussion of fracking. And I'm not sure, Mr. Hudson, do you want to kick this off?
Yeah. Ms. June, when Michigan Bar Journal came out, I read this article on hydraulics and fracking. And I thought, well, that's kind of academic, but it'll never happen down here, it's always in northern Michigan somewhere. And fast forward to last week, I watched the evening news on Shelby Township, there's a mini-revolution going on because there's a tower being erected and presumably determine whether they can start fracturing for gas, I presume, in there. So I contacted Burton, I said, is there anything that ordinances that would apply to this? And he said, I don't think so, but he asked Mr. Motzne for an opinion. And Mr. Motzne sent back the same article that I thought was academic and seems kind of realistic right now. So I asked if we could put this item on the agenda. Brent said, oh, it's too late for this one, but maybe you can move to amend it. And I did with Mr. Edmonds' consent. And I attached in the email, I think I sent to all of you, a copy of that article. And I'm not here to discuss the details, but it seems to indicate there are some gray areas in the law concerning oil exploration and gas and sort of thing where a city in a township could put some regulations in there. I guess it's my suggestion that we don't do a real detailed discussion tonight, but I'd like to suggest that maybe we. I'd like to suggest that maybe we refer to our consultant, our planning director and the legal department, let them take a look at it and get back to us. One more important thing is, I've noticed that two communities around here have established moratoriums.
Six months.
Six months. And the law doesn't seem, say it's gotta be six months, just a reasonable period of time to allow a township or a city to study that question and maybe consider implementing it. I'd like to suggest that we encourage the city to do that.
Yeah, in fact, I think that's the first item that should be requested by the planning commission, is a, is a moratorium. I don't know what the proper procedure is, but I know it would have to, you know, through the city council. But I think, Mr. Motzni, can you give us some guidance on how that might work?
It would have to be approved by city council, but the process in doing that is such that you might as well study whether to do an ordinance and then at the same time. But as a side note, I actually brought some handouts. But it's, before this meeting, I was looking up information on fracking to try to talk about it. And there may be a third committee that has passed a moratorium, because I found out there was a special meeting going on in Rochester Hills tonight, whether to pass a moratorium. And so I tried to see if I could get livestream, and I was actually watching the meeting before I came here. And I think they passed the moratorium, but I missed the beginning of the meeting, because I turned it on and the council member was saying, I'm glad we got unanimous support for this moratorium, so I'm assuming that meant it passed. But they started talking about this senate bill, 1026, did I, did I, I don't know. And what the bill actually would do is amend natural resources and environmental protection act to prohibit issuing a permit for a, for a oil or gas drill or drilling site in any city with a population of over seventy thousand dollars, seventy thousand people, which Troy would need, or if there was any, you could not have a well within four hundred and fifty feet of a residential structure. And so I just thought I'd bring that to your attention, because the council people in Rochester Hills were all gung ho on supporting this bill, because that would pretty much answer their problem as well as Troy's problem, so. But the, the law, it's, it's still a gray area, because this is all new, new, so issue of fracking and. One thing that appears clear, which is set forth in the article, is cities have a little more authority than townships and counties when it comes to regulating oil and gas drilling sites. My opinion is that we probably cannot prohibit them, because that would be exclusionary zoning, and to prohibit any land use, you have to have some really good reasons for doing so. And I think that the oil and gas industry would probably fight pretty hard if we tried to pass a, a law prohibiting them. But I think we probably could put some regulations on where we could, whether they could be located, maybe even require special use approval and that sort of thing. But like I said, we'd have to research it and report back on that. So.
I can schedule an internal meeting with planning department, planning consultant, representatives of the city attorney's office and, and other members of city administration to discuss this, get back to you.
Yeah, my, my biggest concern is, I thought Mr. Hudson put it well, I think we need to be proactive on this and not be lagging. You know, if three other neighboring cities have already put in moratoriums to study the issue, I think that alone is, is like an insurance policy to, for right now. So we wouldn't, in the next six months, have somebody putting one in, 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 in the city. So I think we need to, I don't know if we need a resolution from the planning commission requesting a moratorium for approval by the city council, but I think we should work closely with Mr. Motzni and, and get this on the next city council's agenda for, for the moratorium. I, you know, there is an art, there was an article in the Oakland Press today, in that meeting, they had over seven hundred people, this public outcry against this. And that's what actually convinced the exploration company to remove their rig from the property. And now they're saying that they will work with the state for other reasonable conditions in the future. So I think, I don't want, I don't want us to be a big surprise, because like Mr. Motzni said, you can't prohibit them. You know, people have mineral rights, you know, with, with their deeds, so. But you can regulate how those kind of operations are carried out.
Yes, Mr.?
We have, we have written fracking ordinances for other communities, so we do have some best practices that we could, could bring, and we obviously will work closely with Mr. Motzni and prevent this, this form, so.
And it's, it's very interesting, the state, it's actually, this language is the State Enabling Act, and it, it expressly precludes townships and counties from regulating, it does not preclude cities from doing it. So most of them, the only moratorium I know that's been passed by a city is Rochester Hills, all the other moratoriums are by townships. So that's where, as Mr. Motzni says, as long as it's not exclusionary and it can be backed by a public purpose, there is, there is ways that we can write ordinances to deal with some of these, some of these issues.
Well, the four hundred and fifty foot prohibition against the neighboring properties, you know, there, there are still a lot of lots in Troy. I, I was thinking about even my neighborhood, the people on Willow Road, that certainly have lots over there that are very deep. And so I think the sooner we, we act on this, the better, better off we are. Even if we have to study it for six months, I did, I did the ordinance, I said, what, everybody else?
I, I have a client that, in Ohio, that has oil well, and it's not the big tall clients, and, you know, people are, that's what you assume, but it's, it's not that at all, and it's not noisy. They're a hundred and seventy acres, so.
I think part of the problem is not so much the rig itself, the structure, that's usually for drilling, and then if they strike something, they can reduce it. But it's all the ancillary facilities that go with the roads, the heavy trucks, the big equipment, the noise, and that's more of a problem than the actual rig itself, because that's usually touchy.
Many of them have lagoons around them, even, even the ones that have the small derricks, you know, you see riding through.
No, this is not, we don't have that. But anyway, I, I'm just, I, I don't know that much about it, but I just know that, you know, it's not really, I drove, they drove me around it, I looked at it and everything else, but it's not really what you thought or what I expected to see. And so I.
Well, I suggest that maybe Brent's suggestion is good, it'd be a quick gathering, but maybe within two or three weeks, we can have it back before us. I don't wanna let this thing linger, and there's a tendency with all of us to, to do that, if it's not really pressing.
I'll, I'll schedule a meeting for, internal meeting as quick as I, quickly as I can.
That'd be great.
Any other comments on this?
Maybe someone should do some research as to also what really is the, what does it really do? I heard, there was one thing that I heard, oh, that it does affect possible oil, or water wells. The contamination of water, now that would be something, that would be major.
Go ahead.
You know, but I don't know about the other aspects of it. And maybe you should, someone should do some research on that, too. How bad is it? Are we really over-exaggerating?
Well, I think if you read the, the Bar Journal article, it points out that, you know, that the, the property owner definitely has, you know, rights, mineral rights and that type of thing, mineral extraction. But what we can do is, you know, look at our zoning ordinances, look at the operations that are going on, if it's on a local road, that type of thing, limit the number of trips per week or something like that. There are all those kind of options that would.
No, they don't have trips, so I mean, as far as I understand, there's no real activity going on, once it's established, once it's done. But we have some large parcels, I agree with you, you know, but if it's off, away from everybody, they're making forty to seventy thousand a month.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's small change.
Mr. Shipp.
Yes, years ago, I was thinking of buying some eight acres out on Card Road out by Richmond, and there was some kind of drilling that went out there, that was going on, that contaminated the groundwater and a lot of wells in the area, where the people weren't allowed to drink the water, they could wash, it was enough contamination that they could, they could supposedly bathe and wash dishes, which I, I can't imagine, but you couldn't drink it, and they had to have bottled water. And this was quite a large area that it, that it covered. I don't know what the circumstances for the contamination were, but I would really like to find out exactly how dangerous fracking is in, in a highly developed area.
Yeah, it's been a, a big topic of controversial discussion for quite some time now, so. And I don't know if you're gonna get a consensus one way or the other.
Right.
Okay. Agenda item number eight is public comment for, yes, Mr. Shipp.
Just to confirmation, I asked the planning commission, there was anything, show of hands for, for attendance at the MAP conference, can we do that on a planning commission comment?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, sure, sure. So we have public comment on, for items on the Card agenda? Yes, let's go, Jack.
Good evening, my name is Cynthia Wilshire, I live at three, six, nine, East Maple Road. I'm one of the few residents, like, there's three of us maybe, and the man next door, and he just died a couple of weeks ago, so. And I wanna comment on the art space. I was on the Maple Road study that was done in two thousand and six, and there were so many fabulous ideas coming out of Lawrence Tech students, and one of them was the art bit. And I've been waiting eight years for them to start doing that across the street from my house. There is a place that has that type of environment out in, I think it's Sterling Heights or something like that. It's no, it's the first light north of Hall Road between Shaner and Hayes. And there's a road that runs behind the shopping centers there, that are work, live spaces, that are beauty shops and all, it's a very interesting area, they got some really neat stuff in there. And I know most of you probably have not been down Chopin. Chopin is not a really vibrant street, it, they're old houses, they're cinder block houses, they've been there forever, and a lot of them are very small, and I'll tell you, they're on sixty-two foot lots, because mine is. And that area has got small lots, and right now, I think there's three houses up for sale there. They're either elderly people that live there, that have lived there, I've lived there since nineteen sixty-two, or they are rentals, and they are not well-kept up, and that even reaches to the, across the street and the next street. There's a nice new subdivision back in there, that if you could just wipe out those few streets, now there have been people that have built new houses in there, but it would be wonderful for condos, apartments, duplexes. They're building a lot of that stuff off of Rochester Road. And since MJR went in there, I wanna tell you, our neighborhood is buzzing. They have employed, I've talked to the, the people that work there, and they have employed a lot of college students that couldn't get jobs, and they work with their schedules. They're a wonderful employer, we're, we're, the neighborhood is buzzing with the fact that they're there, we can walk to the movies. It has been just a big explosion on that corner since Kmart left, and I think it could be the part of a walkable area. The part, the property behind there is blighted, it's as bad as anything you're gonna see in Detroit, except now, instead of the broken windows all the time, they boarded them up and painted them black. It's still nasty and should've been torn down ten years ago. It's been vacated forever. And they now have a sign up there that says, coming soon, shopping center. And I personally have talked to the people at Hobby Lobby, 'cause I wanna Hobby Lobby down here. And I know what size property and what they want, they wanna be on a main road, but they don't wanna be on a main road that they're going to pay a lot of rent, and they need fifty-five thousand feet for their, their store. I talked to the store manager, he even gave me a phone number of who to call to have them come to Troy and look for a site in Troy. I also proposed the old A&amp;P at Long Lake and Rochester Road, be an ideal place. But I understand the man that owns that really doesn't care if he rents it or, or what. And if we have those kind of landlords here that are letting these things sit, they need to be torn down. If they can't be renovated and used within a reasonable amount of time, like three to five years, then let's do away with them and start fresh. And that will give you more places for people to come and develop into what we might see in the future. But I would like you all to drive down Chopin and take a look at that street, it, it's not very pretty. That neighborhood is old. My father and mother built the house on the corner of Beach Lane and Maple Road when I was a little girl. My grandfather owned that whole lot. So I've been there, I bought my uncle's house, my aunts and uncles and my father have, have had all of those houses. Some of them need to be torn down in that area, they don't keep up the yards. And if you've got that kind of stuff going on, I think it would be a big improvement. And if you did rezone that back, we had a problem, because Tom Christensen built an office behind us, and we had a doctor that wanted to be our, by our property in the one in the corner, and we could not sell it, because Tom Christensen, we were told by the city attorney then, that we couldn't sell our property, that that corner had to be developed as a parcel. Well, somehow Tom got in there, took my aunt's house, turned it around sideways, moved it back, and built an office behind us. So it's kind of a funny configuration there. But it, it's just so hodgepodge. I think if you rezone that, it might clean up that whole area and might encourage more development, because you've got the movies there. Got a lot of fast food places, we're all waiting for a sit-down restaurant, not like the Capital Grill, 'cause our neighborhood wouldn't support that, but just a nice, we've got the Maple Leaf Diner there, and you play heck getting in there some mornings. They've got very good food and they're reasonable, and people from the neighborhood are in there all the time. And Mama Rosa knows everybody, everybody. They just redid the big boy, which is a good step, because that was a very tired building. But I think if you did a little rezoning for areas like that and encouraged growth in that area, it might expand down both ways. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wilshire brought up a fact then that I think we might wanna consider for Maple Road, you know, we talk about the various different districts. Maybe this could be an area where we can begin to see a work, live, loft type situation. I think that would really, that would certainly be conducive to artists and those, those kind of folks.
Would that is, that is permitted use in the IP district.
Okay. But, but I think in terms of the master plan update, if that was mentioned, that would help.
We can definitely put that in there.
Right. Okay, now we get to agenda item number nine, planning commission comment, and Brett, why don't you go first?
I sent an email to the planning commission members regarding the MAP conference, it's October eighth, ninth, and tenth, it's on Mackinac Island, which is extremely well-attended. Every time they have it there, it hasn't been there for some time, almost ten years, I believe. And I asked the planning commission to consider who was interested in attending, I did some rough calculations, and it looks like about two members can go.
With the remaining budget?
With the, it'll leave, it'll leave some budget left over for, for some.
Day conferences.
Day conferences and things like that, which come up throughout, throughout the year, and there's really not enough for three, so. And there's really not enough for three, so I guess the point of this is to ask how many are interested and then we can take it from there.
Yeah, before we just open it up car bludge, I would just encourage that we consider the newest members of the planning commission, which would be Mr. Lee and Ms. Cruz. If those two folks are interested, then I think it doesn't matter whether the rest of us want to go or not. So I guess.
You attended the, the planning commission sessions at the state conference, correct?
Yes, right.
And I think it's five or six different seminars. It's very, very, it's very intense, but very rewarding. You learn a lot and.
You complete all the core requirements for the master citizen planner in less than, about three days. And the great part about it is that you're with other similar folks. And the dialogue is very, very, very stimulating, so you'll hear lots of views. So, having said that, I guess, are either of the newest members interested in attending?
I certainly am. I submitted a conference request for that date, so it all depends on how.
With your employer, you mean?
With my employer.
Yes, I understand.
So it all depends on, I'm just waiting for central office approval.
Right, right.
I, too, would be interested, but I am also cognizant of the fact that my term expires December 31st. And so I would, you know, not feel really good about spending your money if for some reason my term wasn't extended then into January of 2015. In 2016. No, I'm just saying, I understand it's by appointment. And I don't want to be so presumptuous as to think that, you know, it would be A-OK for me to spend all of your money in October and then you never see me again come January.
I think that's not a huge concern. You were appointed by the current mayor who has served until 2015, so I don't think that's going to be a problem.
That's good to know. But yes, I would be interested and I do think that, I mean, and I'm just speaking for myself personally, I can use whatever tidbits of knowledge I can pick up.
It's one of, it's one of the good programs, you know, the master citizen planner programs. You won't have a lot of time to take other classes or mobile workshops and things like that, but you at least, you know, you get this out of the way and then you can go for your exam and that type of thing.
You didn't tell me there was a test involved.
I will send information to.
Both, thank you.
Tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go around with the rest of the planning commission comment, starting with Mr. Brent on that.
Just wanted to thank Ben and his associates for a wonderful presentation. And thank you, Mr. Hudson, for bringing up the fracking. Appreciate it.
Don't comment.
I think I'll thank Mr. Kiesling for coming to this presentation this evening. Nice to get people with a historical perspective that know the city.
Thank you.
No comments?
Okay, Ms. Cruz?
No, just again to thank Ben and the staff for doing such an excellent job preparing us and informing us. And I always like to see the citizen involvement, and it's been a good meeting.
Good. Mr. Shepherd?
No comment.
Mr. Motsney?
No, thanks.
The only comment I had, I watched the city council meeting the other night and also looked at the backup material. And I'm assuming that you were the one who did it with the development, or the state of development projects.
Yes.
Could I ask that that be distributed to all the planning commission members?
Sure.
Because it's really interesting, so.
You know, even when you had, you know, we had to postpone, cancel a meeting a while ago because it just basically, what happened was, we had some applications in the Hopper and whatever reason they stalled. So you think, boy, there's not much going on.
Right.
But when you, when you see the development report and you get on to the third page, you say, you realize there's been a lot going on here.
Yeah, and the status was very interesting on many of those projects, too. Mr. Carlisle?
No comment.
Kathy?
Nothing, thank you.
Ben, or Brett?
No, thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned.